Counsel, we've come to order. It is 7:00 PM. We do have a call on the April 24th, 2018 council meeting. In just a minute, I'm going to ask everyone to stand. We'll be led in an opening prayer by Pastor Joel Kele at Barrow Church. Following that, we'll be led in the pledges by Councilmember Schaffner, first to the American flag and then to the Texas flag. Joel, would you come to the microphone? Please stand.
All right, let's pray. Father, thanks for today. Thank you for the servants that are in front of me and the servants that are out working and just blessing our town. I pray for safety. I pray for great spirit of community. I pray for us to love one another, for our eyes to be open in ways we can help and be good neighbors. And I pray for our leaders. We thank you for their service and their sacrifices. Bless our police officers, firefighters, EMS workers, and those that run into trouble when others run from it. And thank you for our country. And I pray your blessing would be upon our time together tonight through Jesus, I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
May be seated. It's time for citizens' presentations. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on any matter, whether or not it is posted on the agenda. The council is not permitted to take action on or discuss any presentations made to the council at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. The council will hear presentations on specific agenda items prior to the council addressing those items. You may speak up to four minutes or a time limit determined by the mayor or presiding officer. To speak during this item, you must complete the speaker's form that includes the topics of your statement. Topics of presentation should be limited to matters over which the council has authority. Holly, did we have anybody signed up?
No, Mayor.
Anybody in the audience wish to speak at this time? Seeing no one wishing to do so, we will move on to announcements and reports. Item number one, receive Town Manager Class's update regarding the following discussion and provide input regarding same. Early voting, volunteer appreciation reception, and Plan Development 30. Tom?
Evening, Mayor and Council. Early voting began yesterday and will run through Tuesday, May 1st. The times and location for early voting are located on the town's website. And again, as a reminder, the closest voting location for Denton County residents is here at the Town of Trophy Club Town Hall. And the closest early voting site for Tarrant County residents is at South Lake Town Hall. This year's volunteer appreciation reception will be held at the Trophy Club Country Club on Thursday, June 21st, 2018. Staff is coordinating the event with the Country Club as we speak, and we expect to have the save the date notices out in the near future. And then invitations will go out for the event in late May. Staff will continue to provide additional details as they become available. And then lastly, on April 17th, we held a PD-30 pre-construction meeting with representatives from Beck Ventures and several contractors that are in the process of developing the property. The discussion centered around submittals of permitting and inspection issues, also construction timelines. Beck Ventures anticipates breaking ground sometime in May. They expect the infrastructure and cement work to take approximately six months. Shortly thereafter, North American Properties and Green Brick Partners expect to begin work on the multifamily and townhome properties. With that, I'm happy to take any questions that you might have.
Counsel, anybody have any questions? All right, hearing none, we will move on. Thank you, Tom. Item number two, receive Town Council Liaison update, discussion of same. Parks and Recreation Board meeting of April 16th, 2018. Councilmember Liaison is Councilmember Schaffner. Any updates?
I was not able to attend, but I did listen to it back on SoundCloud. And really, the only item that they had was Trophy Club Park fees. And there was a little discussion of that, but I think that they're bringing that back at their next meeting. One thing I do want to keep you informed about, that they mentioned during a Parks update, is that they have a subcommittee that they're working on the Trophy Club Park master plan. And so I reached out to Town Manager and Parks Director and requested that their subcommittee meet with our sports subcommittee so that we can... I think that there's going to be a lot of... I think council's going to have a lot of opinions on the master plan. And so I'd like to kind of put it in a subcommittee and kind of get some of those ideas that council may have along with the Parks and Rec. And I think at some point, staff is going to meet with the core, just to make sure that we're kind of on the same page and that we can do some of the things that we're thinking about. So, that's it.
Anybody have any questions? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the Town Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Does anybody wish to remove items three through six?
Yes, I'd like to remove item five and item six.
All right. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items three, four, and seven... Three and four, I'm sorry. Anybody wish to move?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve consent agenda items three and four.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right. Secuted by Kurtz. Motion by Schaffner. All in favor of approval of the consent agenda items three and four, please show your hands. All opposed, same sign, it is approved. We'll move on to item five. Consider to take appropriate action regarding amending the non-exclusive use agreement between the Town of Trophy Club and Greater Northwest Soccer Association and authorizing the mayor his designate to execute all necessary documents. Philip?
If you look at page 36, consistent with the discussion that the sports subcommittee had, and I think there was some miscommunication or misunderstanding, but page 36, 4.06, the item that is marked out in red should be in blue, and the item that is in blue should be marked out red. We... At least, my understanding with the subcommittee is that we want to continue to have community updates, not council updates. But I could be wrong, but that's what I gathered from the sports subcommittee.
And so would you like to make a motion to approve this item with the noted changes?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Greg, I'm sorry.
Can you just, for the record, describe the difference between council updates and community update?
Yeah. A council update has been on this contract and all the contracts that the soccer association and the baseball association have had prior to all of us being on council. And at very minimal times has it ever had. I think that we've had maybe once was when Tony actually had them come up a couple weeks ago. Prior to that, any kind of update only happened if we requested them to show up. So, our goal here, when we change this, is for the soccer association and the baseball association to work in combination with the public information officer. And at the end of each season, to have disseminated among our residents any kind of updates, any kind of things that are happening in the baseball association, anything happening in the soccer association, and give our residents some information about where their taxpayer dollars are going. And so that was kind of the... That was the direction that we wanted to go, to kind of kill two birds with one stone. Help soccer and baseball communicate with our residents and for us, as council, to communicate with our residents of what is going on in the associations. Them coming to a council meeting, it doesn't get their information that they need out. So that's why we wanted to change that.
All right. Tam requests to speak next.
Yeah, basically, Philip really nailed it. We wanted to make sure that the information got to the citizens, that they recapped the seasons, told what was going on for the different age groups. And that could be everything from highlights of the season to if, you know, somebody went to the playoffs or something special, or what's going on within the associations themselves. But we wanted to make sure that they got in touch with PIO and make sure that it gets out to the citizens. Coming up here and just giving us a speech at the end of the season is... It makes no sense for us. We want to make sure that the information is getting out to the citizens.
Correct.
Okay.
And that should be for all sports. So...
Eric?
Just to confirm, you're wanting them to come up to the town twice a year at the end of each season? There's a spring and a fall season?
Correct. Not necessarily. They don't necessarily have to come up to the town, but get with our public information officer. And our public information officer can then disseminate that information to our various outlets. So, I will make a motion to approve the GNWSA amended non-exclusive use agreement with the correction made to 4.06, adding in community update and taking out council updates.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Schaffner and a second by Jensen. Any other discussion? Tony, do you have something to say?
No, sir.
Any other discussion?
I have one question. Are we moving... Since we opened up Lakeview, are we moving... Are we trying to move away from using Independence East? Because I noticed you added that into the contract.
That's correct, yes. We're not moving... As far as staff goes, we're not trying to move anything. I notice that... I know that the soccer association does practice out there, and then they'll put... They'll install the portable lights as well. So, in their agreement, Independence East was never mentioned, so I wanted to add that in there as well.
I would just encourage you to try to, if at all possible... The only reason that they ever came to Independence East in the first place is because we closed Harmony, and they were scrambling to get space, and they never left. So it's kind of like inviting your in-laws in and they never leave. So anyway, I would just encourage you to perhaps get with soccer and try to have them utilize the fields that we have for soccer. That way, I think that would eliminate... I think Matt said it best, that he's trying to get away from renting lights and things like that at the last meeting, so that would help eliminate that. So, I would just encourage that.
Sure. All right, Greg?
Just one thing. This does not negate our ability to call them before if we have some questions. Correct?
I don't know why it would.
Well, playing in the rain or bringing lights in unapproved?
I mean...
Just stuff like that. We get a lot of... Sometimes we get resident complaints. Just so it doesn't... Oh, I'm sorry, they can no longer come before council. Doesn't negate that, does it?
I don't... You'd have to ask the attorney. I have no idea.
Okay.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion on item five, please show your hands. All opposed, same sign, it is unanimous. Item six, consider to take appropriate action regarding amending the non-exclusive use agreement between the Town of Trophy Club and Trophy Club Rowan Oak Youth Baseball Association and authorizing the mayor his designate to execute all necessary documents. Philip, do we have the same issue on that?
Yeah, same thing here. So I'll make a motion to approve the TCRYBA amended non-exclusive use agreement, taking out council updates in 4.06 and adding in community updates in 4.06.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Secuted by Fleury. Motion by Schaffner. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign, it is unanimous. We are in regular session. Consider to take appropriate action regarding a proclamation of the Town Council recognizing May 3rd, 2018, as Day of Prayer in Trophy Club and providing an effective date. The chair would recognize Mayor Pro Tem Rowe to read the proclamation.
Proclamation of the Town Council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, recognizing May 3rd, 2018, as Day of Prayer in Trophy Club, recognizing that 2018 is the 67th consecutive annual observance of the National Day of Prayer, and providing an effective date. Whereas, public prayer and national days of prayer have a long and significant history in American tradition, dating back to the first call to prayer in 1775, when the Continental Congress asked the colonies to pray for wisdom in forming a nation. And whereas, these times of national supplication were made official in 1952, when President Harry Truman signed a joint resolution of the U.S. Congress, which enacted legislation setting aside an annual day of prayer for the nation. And in 1988, this law was amended permanently, setting the day as the first Thursday of every May. And whereas, the National Day of Prayer is a vital part of our nation's heritage, as it enables us to recall and teach the way in which our forefathers sought the wisdom of God when faced with critical decisions, thus reaffirming the spiritual principles upon which this nation was founded. And whereas, the National Day of Prayer belongs to all Americans and is a day that transcends differences, bringing together citizens from all backgrounds to honor God, to seek His guidance for our leaders and His grace upon us as a people, and to give Him thanks for the many liberties and blessings we have received, among them the freedom to gather, worship, and pray. And whereas, Thursday, May 3rd, 2018, is the 67th observance of the National Day of Prayer in our nation, and simultaneously, the 26th consecutive observance for the citizens in this 76262 community, having its theme for the year, "Pray for America: Unity," based upon Ephesians 4:3, making every effort to keep the unity of the Spirit through the bond of peace. And whereas, on this National Day of Prayer, we come together as leaders and citizens in unity, as one nation under God, to seek His divine guidance, protection, blessings, and strength, to meet the challenges that we face, both present and future, and to pray for peace throughout our nation and the world. Now, therefore, C. Nick Sanders, in conjunction with the Town Council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, by the power vested in him as mayor of Trophy Club, hereby does proclaim Thursday, May 3rd, 2018, as a Day of Prayer in Trophy Club, to coincide with the National Day of Prayer, and that this proclamation shall take effect from and after its date of passage, in accordance with the law. And it is so proclaimed. And I will move that we approve proclamation number 2018-06, with an effective date of April 24th, 2018.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Rowe, secured by Jensen. Irma, would you like to come to the microphone? Do you have anything you'd like to say?
Good evening, and thank you so much for taking the time to put the proclamation on the agenda. This is an important time for our nation. It's a freedom, it's a privilege that we have, and it's a day that we can mobilize public unified prayer for our nation, its leaders, and our people. And so I hope that each and every one of you can come, and everyone else that is present here, to come join us on that day at the clock tower. And if it rains, and we're praying, God willing it won't, then we'll move to the Methodist Church across the street, 12:00 noon next Thursday.
Irma, have you been doing this for 26 years?
Yes, sir.
All right, well, thank you so much for being involved and making it happen for us. It's a great thing for our community and our neighbors to come do that. So, wait there a minute, I'm going to bring the proclamation to you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. When the Lord tugs on your heart, you are obedient to what He wants you to do. So, yes, thank you.
We're going to go back here and get a picture by the seal, if you don't mind. What do you do with all these?
I save them because I... Maybe not the one, they don't have a wall.
It would cover a wall. All right, come right here. Thank you so much, and appreciate you coming tonight.
She didn't look.
Thanks to Jim, who's supportive.
I don't know who took the time to actually put all of our items on PowerPoint slides. Whoever did that, please extend our thank you, Tom, to that person. Ah, okay, then we'll extend our thank you to Holly, who did that. Thank you so much for doing that. Item number eight.
Do you want to take the vote and apologize, Mayor?
I'm sorry. Oh, do I?
We didn't.
We didn't vote? Oh, well.
We got a motion.
Motion and second on the floor.
Where's the Mayor Pro Tem one I need?
Writing a work email, sorry.
Okay. All right, all those in favor of approving the proclamation, please show your hands. All opposed, same sign. Thank you so much. All right, item eight, receive an update from town staff and take appropriate action regarding town maintaining property with acquisition potential or for adjacent property owners. Counsel, what I'd like us to do is, I think this begins on page 65 of the packet, is go through each item, see if you have any comments, direction to give, so that staff is clearly understanding what we're after. Tony, did you want to have any comments first, or you?
That'd be fine. If I can go through this in order, or if you guys have questions now, Mayor, we can do it either way.
Well, I read it, and there's a staff comment and recommendation at the end of each section. So if council's okay with it, let's go to the section of the woods, which is on page 65. Any comments about that particular section, anybody? Or questions?
Not a big fan of it, but I guess it is what it is.
It is what it is, yeah. So, staff is recommending, in this particular case, that because it was part of a previous HOA, and the way that was dissolved and those things becoming town property, that we still maintain it. All right, Eagles Ridge is the next one. Everything has been verified there, and the recommendation is still B.I.R. property. Is that right? Anybody have questions or comments about that?
Just to clarify, Mayor, real quick. That was showing Beck as the property owner in the past in D.C.A.D., so it was council's direction to get that corrected through D.C.A.D., which is the case now. So if you look up at D.C.A.D. today, it does show the Town of Trophy Club as the owner.
All right. Glad to get that clarified. All right, the next one is lots south of 2876 and 2877, Milson Point Drive.
Yeah, I had a question on that. Have we reached out to the resident to let them know the estimates, or did we just receive those estimates?
The residents at Milson's Point, have they been reached to... About the appraisals and the surveys?
Right, right. Do they... I mean, have you reached out to them after getting those preliminary numbers from Tignall?
No.
Okay. Okay.
And those are real rough estimates, is that right?
That's correct, sir.
And would that be total for the property, or would that be for both properties?
For both properties.
So five and three for both, or five and three for each one?
Five and three for both.
Okay.
Totally.
And they could go get their own survey and appraisal, I assume, right? If they chose to do that?
That's correct.
Yeah, you know, I'm all for reaching out to those residents and offering them that property, but I would want them to absorb that cost if they want it, you know what I'm saying?
Yes. Tom?
Yeah, I think you'll notice in all our comments section that that's the standard recommendation from staff, that the residents should counsel decide to turn the property over, they would incur all the costs.
Okay. Anybody else have anything about those lots? All right, the Lakes Trails are trail.
Mayor, council, that's pretty much the same thing as the Eagles Ridge property as well. If you notice on D.C.A.D. today, same thing, it shows the Town of Trophy Club as the owner as well.
All right, anybody have any questions? Greg?
No, it's the next one, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. All right. So then the next one is a lot on Sonora Drive slash Village West. Greg, your question?
Well, throughout here, it says that you have a private contractor maintaining different lots. We do not have the ability to do that, or why do we farm that out to a private contractor? There's a couple, you know, throughout here.
Sure. No, that's... Just to do other areas... What I've been trying to do the most is contract things out that are non-irrigated. It's in the town's best interest and the staff's best interest to mow and maintain property that's irrigated, to keep it better manicured. This is... Most of the areas in town that are non-irrigated are contracted out, and this definitely would be one of them.
Philip?
Actually, you skipped Creekmere.
Oh, sorry about that.
That's what I was going to comment about.
All right, I'll come back after this one. Anybody else have anything on Sonora? All right, then I'll move you back to Creekmere Drive at Indian Creek. Philip?
Yeah, I appreciate you reaching out to this resident. Obviously, this is one that we would pay for, Greg, because we're obtaining the easement.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And if we get this easement, I'm assuming that the... Do you know how much work it would take to open up that culvert? Because it's there. It's just blocked, correct?
It's blocked completely with concrete, correct.
Do we have any kind of estimate of cost to do the work needed to complete that?
Not yet. I can get it for you from Tignall.
Okay.
Sure.
But I would like to move fairly quickly and secure that easement, if they're... Since they're open to granting that to us.
Eric?
Why isn't the property at any creek on here?
The property on any... The shoulder?
Yes.
That was, I believe, taken care of in last...
It's a property, though, that we were maintaining.
Correct.
Though it wasn't our property.
Correct.
Same as the Trophy Lake, Michelle Court area.
Correct.
And we're going to continue to maintain that property. And we stayed in there. Staff recommends continuing to maintain, because there's a wall between... Precluding the... Preventing the homeowner from getting to their land, but we're making these other homeowners go to... That doesn't make sense to me.
I believe the difference between the woods and the Indian Creek, that the woods has a brick wall.
But they've got wooden fences that are set up and no gates, so what's the difference?
Correct.
I have an issue with that. I would recommend...
So that you're not talking about the Creekmere area?
No, sir. It was property we talked about before. I don't recall that any council direction was given.
Yeah, we said to try not to maintain it. You're talking about along Indian Creek where there are fences back up to that.
The homes that are... Is it Cypress Court? Is that the street?
Yeah, correct.
So there's probably three homes that back up to it, one of which has sent us numerous emails. And now looking at this one, we're... Staff is recommending to maintain one property but not the other, because one's a brick wall and one's a fence. I disagree. And I would like to go back to maintaining that property on Indian Creek if we can.
It wasn't listed on our sheet, was it?
No, sir.
We already made a decision.
All right.
The properties on Indian Creek, we believe, were resolved in the last meeting, insofar as, I believe, staff was requested to send letters out. I signed letters, I think, to three or four residents indicating that we would no longer be maintaining them.
Ryland, you hit the floor?
Yeah, I just... I wanted to comment that I agreed with our direction on that property that Mr. Class just referenced, for the reasons that it's private. So, you know, I don't really see much difference. I know it's not convenient. The first 15 months I lived in my current house, the neighborhood behind me was being developed. I have a wrought iron fence back there. I do not own the property on the other side of that fence. It was owned by a builder. Builder would not maintain the grass. It was growing feet, multiple feet, high behind my fence. I was on council. Poor Thad would bother the guy, and they would always come up with some excuse. They never mowed it. You know what I did? I took my little $140 push mower from Home Depot, and I walked around all the way over to where my neighbor's driveway was, crossed over where I could, and got back behind my own fence where there was no gate on the property I did not own, and mowed it, because it needed to be done. So I don't have a lot of sympathy. I would prefer we don't maintain things we don't own.
Greg, before I come to you, were we finished with the Creekmere discussion, just to get us all organized? All right. And so I'm going to bring us back to this other discussion that Eric brought up in just a minute. But Greg, what did you want to talk about?
No, it was all along the lines of Eric. I noticed that it's not being maintained as well as it should be. Now, maybe they've corrected that in the past week or so. I haven't paid that much attention. But when we started getting the email, I noticed that it was just weeds were kind of high. And those houses, if I'm not mistaken, they're kind of up on a hill. It's kind of difficult for them to come down with a mower and everything. I don't know, maybe we should bring it back, take a look at it again.
All right, so lot on Sonora Drive, was there any more discussion on that? All right, and then lot west of 2641 Highlands Court, any discussion about that? Recommend, go ahead, Tony?
Sorry. Yes, we were approached by the resident at 2641 Highlands Court, showing interest in the property behind his house. So there's a picture of the property. It's approximately almost 2,000 square feet, as you can see. From what staff understands, that that's the gas well adjacent to his backyard. Beck's property has actually butts up right up against 2639, which means that his property line goes strictly across all three of those properties. The, so that's what this is. It's just the homeowner showing interest in purchasing or transferring, the town transferring this piece of property over to his name.
Tom?
The resident at 2639 would not be eligible for this, insofar as their fence is up along the property line. And then if you look at the residence at 2643, there's a mud lift station there, and we contacted the mud, actually went out and looked at it with us, and they're going to need potentially access all the way around that. So that would, that property, although it's town-owned and maintained, we wouldn't be able to offer that same potential for transfer to that resident either. But the resident at 2641 does have that 1,900 square, 1,970 square feet of town property that we maintain that could be subject to transfer.
Ryland?
Yeah, my general thought on any situation like this is, if we own property that's kind of in a corner case, it's kind of similar to the Milson's Point lots for me. If a resident's interested in, under their own, under their own cost, wants to pursue this, assuming we've told them we're cool with it, that's, to me, okay. I have no issue with that at all. I would just, I would just assume, and I know you guys will, that staff will vet the situation like this, that mud may need an access easement that may encroach on this. And if that's the case, then it's a no-go, you know, or something like that. But generally speaking, if there are no adverse conditions on a property that is just of no value to the town, and someone wants to buy it from us at their own, and then deal with surveying and plating at their own cost, then I don't see any reason why we'd want to stand in their way.
So the only issue I have with this one, not that I have a problem with him owning the property, is we just have a longer strip that we're going to have to maintain between the well site and the property?
The well site and the property is actually Beck property, and they maintain that.
So they maintain it. Okay, all right. Okay. So the direction given, or the recommendation given on that property is okay with counsel also. All right, so I'm going to take us back to Eric's comment and others' comments, and ask David for clarification here. We didn't really list that particular property on this packet agenda, so would it be appropriate for us to discuss it, even though we discussed it in a previous meeting and gave direction?
Yes, sir. The way I'm reading Agenda Item Eight, it says, "Receive an update from town staff and take appropriate action regarding town-maintaining property with acquisition potential for adjacent property owners." The list is the attachments. That's basically the pack, the support, it's not the...
So my point is, the list did not include Indian Creek?
I believe the Agenda item is worded broad.
Okay, broad enough. Okay, so we have attorney opinion. Eric, if you'd like to discuss this further, you're asking to, it didn't make sense for us to maintain property outside one person's fence and not these, and so, and we made a decision to direct letters to go to those homeowners, I don't know, for three or four homeowners?
It's three or four.
And I know that we got the letter from one gentleman that sent to counsel, that kind of talked about that it wasn't going to make the town look as nice, because it wasn't maintained all the time together. So Eric, any discussion?
I would just ask, when the time comes, that we add that to the motion, to maintain that property, as we're doing this, the property that's not town-owned at, that there at Michelle Court and Trophy Lake Drive. So we'll see what happens.
All right, so it's Indian Creek behind Cypress in general.
Yes.
All right, any other bodies have comments? Phillip?
Yeah, here's the reason that I am against that. I agree with Ryland, that if the town does not own the land, we should not maintain it. I don't like that we're having to maintain the woods property. It's real unclear how that all came about, but here's the reason that I say this. The woods, it is a solid wall. You're not going to put a fence anywhere in any part of that wall. I'd much rather us bite the bullet and acquire all of that property, do what it takes to acquire it, but the difference is, if you look at the packet, it's, he's saying that that takes three men, each man three hours, I guess it takes three hours to maintain that weekly. We do it 40 times a year. So let's take, let's just say we did half of that on Indian Creek. It's much cheaper for those residents to put a fence in than it is for us to pay a, a street, a parksymmetri worker to go out and maintain that land. They can easily put a gate. Every one of, half of it looks like pallets from a pallet yard, their fence, and so they can take one of those pallets out and put a fence, and easily maintain that property. Much different story on the woods property. I think we ought to acquire that property, and so that it's our property, but I have, I sleep much better at night, knowing that, you know, those residents have a much more difficult time than the residents on Indian Creek, who all they have to do is put a fence in, and they can maintain it. It's wood.
All right, Tim?
So I'm looking at the picture of Michelle Court, and I believe that's Nick's old house, right on the corner?
There is one there, yeah.
Right? So, so you're telling me that the person who lives on the corner can't take a right and mow that side of the street? That's, that's asinine to me, to come to me and tell, tell me that you can't do that, and that we should, we should do it, and that we should pay for it. Now, I could conceivably see four down, the guy says, hey, well, I got to jump over the wall every time, but those people on the corners, there's zero reason why we should be mowing those lawns. Zero reason for that. I mean, it makes no sense whatsoever.
Phil, I mean, Ryland?
Yeah, Phillip made, Phillip stated what I was going to say, which is that if we are to maintain something, we need to own it. We need to, we need to figure out a way. Is it ideal? No. But if we don't own something, we don't need to maintain it. And whether or not, this nebulous sort of idea of the town looking nice, people invoke that when they want something. I've lived here since December 30th, 2004, and I have seen yards look nice, and then they go to crap. And then the guy down the street, his that looked really bad, no, it looks great. New guy bought the house, he takes care of it, whatever. It doesn't, these things, saying the town looking nice, no, town property will look nice. We got a guy, it's his job, okay? Outside of that, we have ordinances, and it's either in compliance or it's not. So the justifications being used don't make a lot of sense to me, other than just being consistent to say, if we own it, we're going to maintain it. If we don't, we're not. Acquisition is fine. I'm not trying to put residents out. I'm just trying to have everyone handled consistently.
All right, so I put myself in the queue to speak. I was waiting to see what would kind of happen to those houses along Indian Creek, behind Cypress, to see if, how well they maintain them. I don't think anybody has put a fence in, or a gate in, but they're just now approaching the season that they're going to have to mow it, apparently. So I'm not in favor of necessarily changing that at this time, although I kind of thought that it would end up looking not so good later. And I suspect they can't put a fence out closer to the road. Because of where a fence can go when there's a right-of-way there.
A wooden fence that you open?
Not a gate, but move their fence.
Moving the fence closer to it.
Move their fence closer to it.
I have a gate in my backyard that my mower fits through.
I'm not saying you can't have a gate. I'm just saying, the fence is probably going to stay where it is. I do know the case of the woods, because I owned that house on the corner at one Michelle Court. My property line went out to the street, which was kind of an interesting problem. And so we looked at trying to deed over the property to the town, back when I owned the house, but then it meant you had to get the lot resurveyed, and then the, and reappraise the lot, and your value was going to go down for a number of acres, and then how did that affect your mortgage?
Right.
So it became a more complicated issue, so we just ignored it and went along, because it was maintained by the town. I'm with you. I wouldn't have minded, I didn't go out and mow it, but have somebody mow it if it was my property.
Come on, Nick.
But I used to plant things in the, in the corner, in the planter, and I used to pay the water bill for the planter and pay for the light when I lived there, because those were separate things for us. So that's just kind of how I feel about it. So I don't necessarily want to change anything that we decided at this point, but unless you all feel like you really want to move that. Greg?
Well, I guess if we didn't approve the woods, I would be okay with the Indian Creek, but Indian Creek is a main roadway. And as far as number of hours, I don't think it comes nearly close. The woods, in addition to the mowing, we're maintaining a flower bed. Are you considering those hours of manpower with the flower beds?
With the flower beds.
So they don't have flower beds on Indian Creek. There's three or four lots, and how many lots are on Michelle Court?
Four, five.
Five. So...
It's really...
The man hours is reduced then?
Four with one as a...
That's why I said cut it now.
Five, yeah.
Let's do 40 times a year.
All right. So we are agenda to take action, based on what I heard earlier. Everything listed in the packet for pieces of property, counsel agreed with the recommendation at this point. So you could make a motion to follow that, and then deal with this one piece of property separately, as you make the motion, if you want to deal with Indian Creek, unless you want to reverse the woods recommendation. Anybody wishing to go after a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion on the woods. I'll make a motion that we work to acquire that property, and the town own it.
I'll second.
This is just on the woods right now.
All right, so we do have a second, moved by Phillip, seconded by Roe.
So the reason I made this motion is because I agree with Ryland. If we are going to maintain property in this town, we should have ownership of the property. If we don't own it, we should not maintain it. Nobody comes and mows my easement. Nobody comes and mows any of your easement. So if we don't own the property, we should not maintain it.
All right. Tim?
Yeah, I agree with that wholeheartedly. I would say that if we can't get the property, if they won't deed it over to us, then they're going to have to take care of it themselves. I mean, that's, that's the way you couch it.
All right, so do you want to make an amendment to the motion to be clarified on that?
Yeah, well, we, I'd like to put in a timetable, like, because this will just go on forever. So I'd like to come up with, I don't know what a good timetable is, but we need to put something in here where we have a deadline for this to happen, or we stop mowing. So we need to discuss that.
All right. So did you want to, I was looking for an amendment to include your comment about when you make the offer that we'll maintain the land if they are willing to turn it over to us?
Yes.
Do I have a second for that amendment?
Second.
All right, so Jensen, second.
And just to be clear on my motion, this is the, the prop, what we want to acquire is the property that we maintain.
Right.
We don't maintain the fence, so we do not want the fence. Just right in front, that we've maintained for all these years. We've never maintained the fence. The mud, I think that that's their maintenance issue.
Well, they weren't sure it was in the right-of-way.
No, I'm just saying they...
All right, Eric?
The other ones.
You have the floor?
Well, we've got a, an amendment, I believe, we need to vote.
So you're not speaking on the amendment?
Correct.
And Greg, were you speaking on the amendment?
No, something we can...
All right, anybody else want to speak on the amendment? All right, seeing no one. All those in favor of the amendment, which is to, when making the offer to those properties owners, that we would maintain that land if they're willing to let us acquire the land excluding the wall. Is that clear? All right, all in favor of that amendment, show your hands. It is unanimous. The amendment passed. That takes us back to the motion as amended. So the motion was work to acquire the land along a Trophy Club Drive by the woods, and it's been amended to not include the wall, and if, and when you make the offer to the citizens that live there, if they're not willing to let us acquire the land, then they need to maintain it. Is that, is that what everybody thinks we're voting on?
Yes, sir. I'd like to speak on that.
All right, Eric?
Motion to amend to include property on Indian Creek behind Cypress Court, excluding the fence. Second.
All right, so I have a motion to amend to include the property along Indian Creek, roughly behind Cypress, and not include the fence, right?
Yes, sir.
And I have a second by Kurtz. Anybody wants to speak on this amendment?
Yeah, let me just make, let me just find out if we're clear on this. So if we offer the resident to acquire, and by acquire, I just say take over, not, not pay, and they disagree, we then, it is then their responsibility to maintain that piece of property, correct? We're all in agreement on that?
Yes.
I am.
Yeah.
Yes.
And we're okay if it's split up, where we, we may, I mean, it's not an all or nothing.
Right. Individual properties.
Right.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah, in other words, Indian Creek doesn't go with the woods, right?
But what about which house on Indian Creek?
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying. That's why I wanted to be clear, if, if one resident...
I would, I would add that to you. Whoever made the motion, I would...
Eric, you made the motion to amend, but you were including...
Of course, the amendment right now is just strictly to...
So we'll vote on that, and then I'll make the amendment.
It seems to me logical to, all the houses have to agree to it or none. Kind of like, take it or not, because otherwise, then we're only blocking one lot, and that, I don't think that's worth...
Right.
All right. So we're on the amendment that Eric made, to include the Indian Creek property, roughly behind Cypress, in our offer to be able to acquire that land, if we can acquire all of it, and not the fence, and then we would maintain it. Any more discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, call for the, David, did you have something to say on that?
Yeah, I'm going to wait.
Okay. Okay. All those in favor of the amendment, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. That passed. All right, so now we're back to the main motion, as amended two times. Eric, you were on the main motion. Do you want to talk now?
No, sir.
All right. David, do you want to, oops, go ahead.
Just a quick question. Who's paying for the survey? And the legal description?
Yeah, this would be the town. The town is acquiring this land, so we're paying for, that's, that's the intent of my motion, is that we pay for this, we get it in our name, then we maintain it. Now, do you want me to be clear on all or nothing?
I think, I think we need to be clear on our motion, if we can.
Okay.
So I would include the cost of the survey, but, but if they don't agree to it, then you're not going to survey it.
Yes, correct.
Right? Okay. So Phillip, you want to try to modify your motion?
So I'll amend the motion to, to say that we will pay for all legal fees, all acquisition, or, how do you want me to word it?
Legal fees, plating, and survey?
Survey, plating, expenses regarding the survey and plating.
Okay.
I can graph it.
Okay. So pending permission from the homeowners to release that property, all homeowners to release that property on the woods and on Indian Creek, then the town will pay for all survey and plat fees to acquire that land, so that the town would, didn't be responsible for maintaining it.
I'll second that. Any... Any discussion about the amendment? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote on the amendment. All those in favor of the motion to append pending permission of the owners, the town would be responsible for the legal, legal fees, expenses for acquiring the land, and it is conditional on all landowners on each section to agree. All in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. All right, we are back to the main motion as amended, as convoluted as it may be at this point. Holly, do you have enough that you could read it back, or you want me to try to just summarize?
Okay. We're going to move forward with the woods to acquire the property and the town to own it. And we've got our amendments following suit.
So we're going to work to acquire the land along Trophy Club Drive by the woods subdivision. That it would not include the brick wall. And that if the, if all homeowners were not willing to allow us to get the land, then we would not acquire any of it. And if they don't allow us to acquire it, they will have to maintain it. And then that also includes the land along Indian Creek, roughly behind Cypress with the same terms. All the landowners would have to agree for us to do it. If they're not willing to let us acquire it, then they would have to maintain it.
Should we be specific, specific on that?
As far as which lots?
Because you, you would go from basically Hogan's Glen until that first house that's on, what street is that, Tony?
Jennifer Court. Jennifer Court. No, that's not-
No.
He's talking about Indian Creek.
He's talking about Indian Creeks.
Oh, by Cypress?
The land that's, the one house that's in Hogan's Glen there-
Lake Forest.
Is maintained by the HOA.
Which one? Yeah, the one with the wall?
Yeah.
So is it, I think it's Lake Forest. Let me just make sure. So basically, it goes from two, from the edge of two Lake Forest Drive until the Hogan's Glen property, correct?
And that the town would pay the necessary fees to transfer, survey, replat, all of that if we acquire.
Correct.
But acquire meaning we were not going to buy.
Correct.
So somehow we'll have to word that, Holly.
Yeah.
I've got a lot of notes about it. When you work on it, let me know and we can kind of pull all our thoughts together. Is anybody clear on this? Eric, you look, I have a puzzled look.
Never mind.
So, so one, one question that, this is probably before Tom. Obviously, there's a cost associated with this. Is this something that would be beneficial to budget for the next budget season and just continue to do what we're doing until, that's, that's more your question. You, you have a contingency, but I don't want to spend your money.
It's depleted.
Realistically, I think by the time this would all get accomplished, we probably would be in the 19 budget season. So what I would say is we'll-
Include it.
Include that in the 19 budget. If we are fortunate enough to work through this issue, I would certainly look at using some contingency funds, depending upon how much we had available to do it.
All right. All of those in favor of the motion, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. Oh, wait a minute, Greg, you-
Oh, wait a minute.
Well, I didn't see it till I asked for the vote. Greg, do you want to talk?
A question. What are we going to do in the interim before we get all this resolved? Do we want to continue?
Status quo.
Status quo.
I do have just one comment.
Yes.
I'm sure you guys are aware, I'm not sure, don't know if you wanted to add this to the language or not, but you are aware of the water main line that runs parallel with the brick wall, almost. So if that, we don't know exactly where it's at. So if it's on our, if we acquire the property and it's on our, the main line's on our side, make sure that-
But, but wouldn't that still be under a mud easement even if we acquired that?
Correct. I just want to make sure you guys were aware of the-
Yeah, so it's still their easement, still their problem.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Tony.
Well, are we going to deal with, do you want us to deal with the other properties? To go ahead and-
Yes. Yeah, that, this was just a separate item. So now we're to everything that was in the packet. Anybody want to?
Well, other than the woods.
All right, so-
Other than the woods, yeah. I make a motion that we approve the recommendations of staff contained in our packet on this particular agenda item number eight, exclusive of the woods.
Second.
All right, Sanders moved and Shoffner seconded.
No, Lamont.
Oh, Lamont seconded. Well, I heard two voices, didn't I?
I know my nickname's Shadow, but I-
No respect.
All right. Any other, any other discussion?
Yeah, I, I just would really like to move quickly on Creekmere. I, I think that, given the window of opportunity to acquire that, we should move swiftly on that.
All right. All in favor of the motion, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. All right. Thank you, everyone. Tony, thank you. And staff, thanks for working on that. We'll see how it goes as we move forward. Tom, do you feel like you've got adequate direction on things?
I believe I do, and we'll go through the minutes to make sure.
Okay. Item nine, consider and take appropriate action regarding an ordinance amending various sections of appendix AP schedule within the town code of ordinances and provide an effective date. Tom, did you want to say anything before we begin this discussion, or anyone?
Yeah, I do.
Oh, you're there.
All right, good evening again. Last year, I tasked staff to undertake a comprehensive review of all the Trophy Club fees and to do a comparison with the nearby municipalities. The purpose for the review was to ensure that the town was reasonable in recovering costs for its services rendered, to ensure the town's permit and building procedures were being followed and fairly applied, and also to ensure that staff established a methodology for the assessment of fees that could be replicated on a periodic basis. Staff compared the town's fees against the same 10 municipalities that we generally use for our HR and benefit studies, which are based in size, on size, demographics, and proximity to the town of Trophy Club. The municipalities that we chose were Colleyville, Capel, Flower Mound, Grapevine, Highland Village, Keller, Little Elm, Roanoke, South Lake, and the Colony. Staff then specifically looked at each of the municipalities for their fee structure and cost and the cost recovery requirements. And then from that, staff determined the average fee cost of the municipalities as a whole, and then made adjustments either up or down, depending upon the established town of Trophy Club fees. I just want to put this in the proper context. The town of Trophy Club has approximately 420 different fees in our ordinances. And what the staff is proposing at this point is a, essentially a look at 41 of those 420 fees. And of the 41, staff is actually proposing that 12 of the fees be eliminated altogether, that three of the fees be decreased, and that increases be made to only 26 of the fees that we have in place. So staff would recommend the adoption of the revised fee schedule as presented, and then an annual review of the fee schedule as we move forward into fiscal year 19 and beyond. With that, I'll bring the directors up for any specific questions that you might have regarding the ordinance that we have in front of you.
Eric, you have a question first?
So first a comment. Buddy mine that's a contractor, asked him about the fees. He said Trophy Club fees are very fair compared to other towns, so had no issues with any feedback that I got. Have a question about reservation fees. You've eliminated non-resident fees for soccer, baseball?
Yes, sir. What was the question? I'm sorry.
You've eliminated non-resident fees, but don't necessarily say non-residents are not allowed to do it, even though they are allowed to rent the pools. So why are we not allowing, I assume that was your goal, not allow non-residents to reserve soccer, baseball fields?
That's correct. So we've had numerous requests, especially this year, for our baseball fields to be leased or rented for an hour, two hours. And so, in order to move forward, I've met with the sports subcommittee and discussed, and so we removed the non-residents, just to have only residents from Trophy Club to be able to rent those, the fields.
Do we state that on here?
No, sir. And one of the other reasons also is because there is a Sunday time slot that are there only able to rent those out for up to four hours. So if we open it up to the public, that will limit the, the usage of the fields to-
But it's not a big deal on, on the pool or the spray pad, you say, or the pavilion reservation's not a big deal because you're still allowing that?
That's correct. That's correct.
Last question is about animals. And why do we charge a fee to license a pet? A $5 fee? Never understood that.
I'll take this on behalf of the police department. In talking with the chief, we have always done that. We've added this into the code of ordinances because it's never been in there. So we just wanted to codify it. But essentially, we charge that fee just, it gives us a tracking mechanism to know how many animals, or how many dogs or cats that are actually here in, in the town. Now, I recognize the fact that that doesn't necessarily mean that the residents register their animals, but it's for tracking purposes. And it's a nominal cost that takes care of the administrative costs involved in-
Is there a fine if you are caught not registering your animals?
I'm not, I'm not certain of that.
Thank you, sir.
All right, Phillip?
Yeah, let me just talk to that point. I've reached out to Tom and, and the chief and asked that question. And in 2018, we had 46 dogs registered and four cats.
Four cats.
2018, to date, 38 dogs and one cat. So it's, I don't know that we're really tracking us animals.
There's 38 dogs on my street.
I have a cat that's not registered.
I understand that this isn't an ordinance that, and, and the fee schedule is not the only place that it's at, but I think that it is time that we employ the smart government approach here and unwind this thing. And maybe we can start tonight by not including it in the fee schedule.
So I had a question, and I agree with you, Ryland. I never have liked the fee. I had a question on, to Tony, tournament overflow game fee. What, what are we doing with that?
Eliminating the fee. So, if you have a tournament that is being held in Trophy Club or South Lake for that matter, and they're using Trophy Club fields, South Lake, Roanoke, any overflow from any of those surrounding cities where the teams are being, or games are being played, and they don't have any space to play their, finish their tournaments? If they play on our fields, we are eliminating the, the fees.
How are we, how, why would we do that?
Well-
I don't remember that.
That makes no sense.
Right.
So, I just want to make sure I understand you. So, if there's a tournament in South Lake that has nothing to do with Trophy Club and they need extra fields-
Correct.
They're going to use our fields for free.
Correct, and-
That's the exact opposite of what we stated when we went over this.
Right. Okay.
I just want to make sure I understand.
No, I was going to say, and it works the other way around as well. So if we have Trophy Club teams that play in Trophy Club and there's overflow, they also, they, they can also go to the other fields and-
But we don't do tournaments. We do one a year, basically.
Correct.
So we're not a tournament, baseball field city.
But I thought that we, when we met with both of you, I thought that we said if, if they, if they're having a tournament in South Lake and they need our fields, we're going to charge them.
Yeah, reduce fee.
And I can't remember if it was a per hour or a per game.
But there was a fee.
But we, we came up with something. And I, I thought that's what we agreed to.
I compared it to other cities. That's what I thought we were, I was directed to do. I could be wrong.
So you're saying if we have a tournament here and we need to utilize one of South Lake's field, that they're just going to let us use those fields?
That's not true. Because they had a fee. When we went over it, they had the exact same thing, and we all, we said we wanted a fee.
Match that, all right.
Yeah, we don't have enough space that we're just going to let teams come in and take our fields for free. That's, makes zero sense. We have regular citizens who are saying they want to get on our fields. There's no way that we should allow people to come in and take our fields.
Where is that item, Phillip?
That's on page 95.
Just so we're real specific.
So we, we actually had an $85 game fee, overflow game fee. I think that that should, it seems low to me. You know, I, I think that, that you, at a minimum, if you're going to bring teams in here, I, you know, I'd have to refer to-
I thought we matched at the time when we went over it, that we, we matched like South Lake and stuff, and that's how we came with that.
That's what I thought, too. But 85 seems low to me.
Yeah.
All right, so is your recommendation that we include a fee for that at 85, or do you want to-
Well, I would, I would-
125?
Well, didn't you talk to the guy one time?
Yeah, it was 125.
Yeah, I, I would say we change that to at least 125 a game.
Okay.
So that's on page 95 at the top where it says tournament overflow game fee.
And what, what you're saying, Tony, I just want to make sure, you're saying these other 10 towns don't charge a fee?
The, the average, the average, yeah, I called other cities. I, I got the information on my, filed away, but-
I, I think I'm clear after the meeting that we had, the subcommittee meeting, that the fee is something that we need to assess.
All right, Phillip, did you have anything else?
Yeah. Okay, so let me understand. I, I don't like raising fees. A guy comes in and is putting in a fence, why, why do we think that we need 10 more dollars to, for a fence permit?
Basically, holding it at the medium, median price, which y'all wanted to do, and the cost of actually doing the inspection to break even.
So, so, so 10 more dollars, what's, what is the cost to break even? Do we know?
$85.
So it's 85 for you to-
That's based on a study based on, no, not me.
No, no, I'm saying-
It'd be much higher.
But see, but, okay, here's, here's what I, here's what I want to get at. I want to, I, I understand some of these fees that you're trying to do, like a reinspection fee. That makes sense to me. But what I, what I don't want to do is put a burden on our residents because Colleyville and Grapevine and South Lake and some other Flower Mound, because they have higher prices. So, in situations of permits for residential items, a guy is going to do a fence, you know? His fence breaks down, he's going to do a fence. I, I think that, I hate raising fees for somebody like that. You know, these, these other fees that you're talking about as far as like, looking at a big project and you want the hourly rate instead of that one-time fee, I totally agree with that. I totally agree with fees for reinspections, you know, especially when you have a project that you have to go back nine, 10 times because they just can't seem to get it right. So I, I agree with those. I just hate putting a burden on residents for these, these smaller items that somebody trying to do a remodel in their house, somebody trying to do a fence, somebody trying to upgrade their irrigation, things like that. I just don't understand why we need to, to raise that. I just, I can't imagine that we're losing money on a $75 inspection.
We're currently losing money on a $75 inspection simply because you take your standard retaining wall or your, your remodel. If you have an $85 fee or a $75 fee, that doesn't even pay for one visit. When you calculate in the cost of the vehicle, the insurance to pay for them, the inspectors doing the job, so on and so forth. And then you're not going to do a one-time- And then you're not going to do a one-time stop. So those jobs out there take four and five inspections or stops.
Okay.
So now you're well under.
So how many, how many inspections does a fence take?
On a new fence or a fence that is required to be permitted, because all aren't, one stop.
Okay, one stop. So I think that it's, to me, you keep it at $75. I just, I don't understand going, I just don't understand it.
I'm way down on the list, but while we're on fences, Tommy makes a great point. If you go and look on what the requirement is for what constitutes requiring a permit, it makes me question why we even have it unless the fence is moving locations. Like, I mean, so I could put that on future agenda, maybe we need to readdress it to where the only reason it would even require a permit would be is if someone on staff has to look and compare it to the building line and make sure it's legit. Because right now, it has to do with how much of the front that you're facing that you're replacing, which is purely aesthetic and a little bit arbitrary. So, I mean.
Well, here, the reason that I've never liked.
There's probably a lot of ways to handle this, and the fee schedule is one way to do it, but another way may be to change some things so that they don't trigger going to a permit at all.
The reason that I've never liked a fence permit is, one, because we do not have an ordinance that requires you to have a fence unless you have a pool. So really, you don't have to have a fence. And second, if you do build a fence and you're up against somebody, somebody else's fence, we don't allow that, but that then becomes a code enforcement issue at that point. But that's neither here nor there. I agree with Roland, maybe a future agenda item. Let me ask just one more, and I'll let some other people ask. Irrigation, why do we even need to look at irrigation other than for backflow?
That is the only thing we look at. Being a town less than 20,000 square feet, we don't have the authority through TCEQ standards to go any farther with it. So we license the irrigator that's doing the work. We charge no fee to the individual that has to test it because by TCEQ standards, it's got to be tested. And then we take that report and file it. We only look at the backflow device, which protects our water supply system.
But you do have to file it with TCEQ?
Yes, that is correct.
So there's labor and cost.
Okay. So and one other thing that I'm going to amend the motion when we do this is I'm not a big fan of requiring fees for people to work in our town. And the, we've eliminated, we've eliminated master electrician, but mechanical and irrigation both require state license, and so I think that we should eliminate those as well. We're double dipping basically on the contractor. That's all I have for now.
All right. My comment is just a question on page 88. When do we charge a meritorious exception? When have we charged for a meritorious exception, which is $100 bucks?
We charge for that, that's for the signs, and so I'll take payment for that as soon as they apply. And so HG Supply was one of them, and the church that y'all just.
Okay, that's what I thought. So they're already pulling a sign permit?
Mm-hmm.
So is it only signs that we do that on?
For meritorious exception, yes. That's in the sign section of the ordinance.
But is there anything other than a sign that you ask for a meritorious exception on?
No.
So I'm asking for an additional $100 for a sign if it has an exception?
Yes, because it requires coming to P&amp;Z and council, so that's a lot of extra work.
All right. I just wanted to make sure I understood. Greg?
Okay, before we lose control.
I'm in control.
Yeah, okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2018-08 as presented at the dais, excluding the animal registration fee and including a tournament overflow fee of $125 effective 10/24/2018.
Second, motion to amend to include item B, lost license fee as removal, and item I as pig license removal. It's on there.
Okay, that's fine.
What did you say, Jensen? You wanted?
So I seconded and made motion to amend to add item B, lost license fee to remove, and item I, pig registration license to remove.
My pig found himself able to, sorry.
All right, so Greg, repeat your motion one time, please.
Okay. Motion to approve ordinance 2018-08 as presented at the dais, excluding the animal registration fee, lost license fee, pig fee, and including a tournament overflow fee of $125 effective 10/24/28.
I agree with that motion.
All right. And then the amend was to include?
He added my.
He removed.
To his motion.
It's got to be an amendment. I apologize.
All right. Who seconded the amendment?
That was me.
No, you seconded the motion.
Oh, I apologize. I seconded.
All right. So Row seconded the amendment. All right, so any discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, we'll ask for the vote on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment, show your hands. All opposed, same sign, the amendment passes unanimously. We're back to the main motion as amended. I had a question, I think. But I was trying to track this, so let me think a second.
You want me to ask a question while you're looking?
Yeah, please do.
Okay, what electrical permit, small job, single trade?
But page?
But page 85. What are we talking about there? Why are we eliminating that fee?
The, for electrical?
Right.
Because that House Bill 3329 doesn't allow us to unless we put it under a building permit status. And when I was researching that House Bill originally, the interpretation didn't include building permit with a subtitle of E or, you know, whatever to get it charged. It was intended that if there's a building permit on the site, those are validated permits, and that's why it recaptures the fee, because of the permit fee for the remodel.
No, 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 I think we're on two different things. The small job, small job, single trade, you're eliminating electrical permit, small job, single trade. You're going from 75 to no fee.
Right, that was part of the House Bill.
That's part of the House Bill?
Yeah. No permit fees, you cannot charge an electrical permit fee or registration. That was his blanket language in the, in the House Bill. Then it came back to say you can recoup or obtain your fees through a building permit. Well, the resident, go ahead.
No, so.
So any permits, which means if a guy wants to put, an electrician wants to come in and get a permit, he still has to have that permit to do the work, and we still have to do the inspection, but I can't charge him.
So their trade, their trade organization has the best lobbying estate?
Yes.
So you're saying that if he comes in, he has to get a permit, and you charge a permit fee?
Fee simple, no, there is no permit. We can only recoup a fee under a building permit.
So I come in and I'm going, I'm going to move a plug from one wall to another. I have to get a permit, correct?
No.
It's electrical.
No.
You don't have, so.
No, so you've already got an existing circuit, so that doesn't take it into the.
Okay, so what if I add a circuit?
Then you got to get a permit.
Okay, and then you can charge, so you're saying you can't charge?
I can't charge electricians under an electrical permit.
But you can charge, but he's pulling a permit to move that, to add that plug?
You increase the cost of the permit. You don't charge, instead of charging two fees, you increase the charge of building permit.
If there's a building permit involved.
But he still has to get a permit?
He still has to get a fee simple permit, no fee involved. Another reason to increase inspection costs.
Or animal costs.
Or animal costs. No pigs.
Wow. But you're, but you're.
Those 38 dogs are running.
You're, oh, man. So you're, you're passing the electrician's cost to the plumber and to the irrigator and to the others because the electrician can just vault in and not.
You had a better.
Well, actually, the state did that.
Take it off your.
It just, yeah.
Wow.
Okay, Phillip, I didn't delete you. Are you through asking questions?
Oh, go ahead with yours now.
I'd never thought of it, so I'm finished. I removed you. All right.
Okay, well, then I need to, I want to make an amendment.
Okay.
To waive or to eliminate the mechanical and irrigation contractor registration fees. And I guess at that point, that eliminates number six, because there would be no country. Actually, you can eliminate the whole F because there's no fees.
I will second eliminating the F.
And again, my reasoning is because these guys coming in are already paying the state to work in the state of Texas, and we're just adding on to that. When I was in high school, I got my journeyman's license. I worked for a guy, and we had to register with the city at that point. So I was registered with the city of Dallas, and all the other cities reciprocated with Dallas. I didn't have to go register in every other city if I worked. And so the same thing, the state realized, oh, wait a minute, Dallas is getting all that money, Houston's getting all that money. And so they took over. And so basically, the same thing, we're just reciprocating with the state.
All right, so.
And you do require on a permit, the license, correct? We do require that.
Right, when they register, which they still will, you know, with no fee, obviously, they have to have their license and a driver's license, picture, identification.
Eric?
So to be clear, what you're wanting to do, right now, we require a master electrician fee as presented was no fee, which I assume was another state issue, is why you removed the master electrician fee?
Correct, that was part of the House Bill.
Fire protection, we didn't require one, master plumber, we didn't require one. We did for mechanical and irrigation. But now your motion is to remove basically just those two fees, the mechanical and the irrigation.
Right, only because they, like all the others, are licensed by the state.
Yeah, how often were we requiring renewals?
Annually.
Oh, wow.
All right, so I had a question. In Phillip's motion to eliminate the mechanical and irrigation registration fees, does that cause you any concerns?
None at all.
All right. Are we ready to vote on the amendment? All in favor of the amendment, show your hands. All opposed, same sign, it is unanimous. And that was Phillip's amendment to eliminate the mechanical and irrigation registration fees, which eliminated all of number, or F. All right, so we have a main motion as amended. Are you ready to vote on that? Anybody have a problem? No? All right. All in favor of the main motion as amended, show your hands. All opposed, same sign, it is unanimous. Thank you, everybody, for working on it.
Thank you.
Item 10, consider to take appropriate action regarding calling a town council special session meeting to be held on May 16th in order to canvas the returns and declare results of the town's May 5th special election. So we don't have any dates to pick from, right, Holly?
No, sir, we don't. This would be the last day to be able to legally canvas. It's uncertain when we'll get those returns back from both counties, so we always propose the last day to canvas.
All right. So someone wishing to move the calling of this election?
So moved.
Second and question, we don't, we just need a quorum?
Which would technically just be three, but we prefer.
The full.
Yes.
My, my input on.
I did second that, you heard.
I got it.
My input on scheduling on that would be to aim for the morning.
Okay. We were looking at having CCPD canvas their portion of the election at 9:00 a.m., so we're looking about 10:00 a.m. Would that be okay?
Yeah, I would just feel like it would be easier, I don't know about everybody else, but for me, morning. Did it really need an hour?
We could do 9:30.
Oh, yeah. We don't, we're in and out of here in five minutes.
I could push it even up to 9:15.
Make it like a tee time, 9:21. I'm just kidding, whatever.
We'll make it work.
You'll make it work, Holly. I'm sure.
All right, so we have a motion and a second for this date to canvas the election. Any further discussion? All in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign, it is unanimous. All right, item 11, discussion of items for future agenda to include agenda items for consideration on the May 8th council agenda items and for the future agenda list. I have one item to add to our May 8th agenda. The Women's Club has gotten everything together in order to come back before us about their statue that they have money for, they have it designed, they've talked about placement, and so they want to be on the agenda to come and ask us about potential addition to the Veterans Memorial, which is a military service dog with a helmet beside it along with some boots, I think, or something like that.
I thought we had already made that decision.
I have to agree with Phillip, but a motion was made that directly related to what they wanted to do.
Well, I'm going to add it to the agenda to allow discussion. I'm just letting you know that. We never had a picture, we never had everything about it. The discussion was all about that, that the initial design was done and complete. You've got a group of citizens who want to come to you and say, I want to make an addition, and it's up to you to make that decision. So I'm just letting you know that I'm going to add it to the agenda, and you'll deal with it appropriately. Anybody else have anything for the May 8th council meeting?
No, sir.
Anybody have anything for the future agenda list? All right. Hearing none, we will then move on. We are down to item 12, which is our executive session, so just in a minute, we will move into executive session. Pursuant to item 12, pursuant to the following designated section of the Texas Government Code, annotated chapter 551, Texas Open Meeting Act, the council will convene into executive session to discuss the following. A, section 551071, consultation with attorney under subsection 2, to consult with the town attorney on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meeting Act, specifically breach of contract, issues, procedures, and claims. Item B, section 551072, deliberation regarding real property to discuss or deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property in deliberation in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the governmental body in negotiations with a third person, specifically north of State Highway 114, east of Trophy Club Drive, and west of town limits. It is 8:36, I mean, 26, and we are in executive session.
Does I have it?
Do I have it right here? Yeah. Council, if you will come to order, we will reconvene into our regular session at 9:00 p.m. Item number 13, consider to take appropriate action regarding the executive session. Does anybody have any action in reference to the executive session? Hearing none, we will then move on, and it is 9:01. We stand adjourned.
Boom.
Y'all like me to do?